Means now called to order.
Good evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 1046 et cetera, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising the Star Ledger, El Nueva Coke, Haiti Progress, and Luz Maracana newspapers, and by distribution to the administrative offices of the Newark Public Schools. A copy of the meeting notice was also forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting for Tuesday night, August 22, 2017.
My flash loop. Roll call.
Mr. Bledsoe.
President.
Ms. Carter.
President.
Ms. Fonseca.
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy.
President.
Ms. Garcia.
President.
Ms. Johnson.
President.
Ms. Owens.
President.
Mr. Padilla.
Present.
Chair Lewis.
Present.
Congress President, Mr. Chair, everyone's here.
Now we have greetings by principal of this wonderful school, Ms. Nicole Johnson.
Good evening. Good evening Superintendent Sir, Mr. Lewis, members of the Board, and all of the guests that are here this evening. My name is Nicole Johnson and I am the proud principal of this wonderful school, Elliott Street School. Thank you. So instead of standing here and listing our goals for students for the year, I thought I would share a letter, very brief, that I received today from one of our sixth grade students. He actually dropped it off in the summer. Dear Elliott Family and Ms. Johnson, this school year, I'm going to put all the drama to the side and I'm only going to be focused on school and school only. It's going to be so hard with my mom not being here, but I'm going to do everything for her, for the Elliott family, and for Ms. Johnson. You've got my word. I'm going to be the leader that you know that I can be. I will set the example for the little ones in our school. They will look up to me, I promise. Whenever I'm in your office, it's only going to be for good things, such as my report card and park scores. Believe me, I've changed a lot. You will see that my actions speak louder than my words. Love, the student. So I wanted to share this letter because it really validates the work that I believe that we're doing here at Elliott, both the leadership team and the teachers. We consistently greet and refer to our parents and our students and our staff as family. And he began the letter with, "Dear Elliott Family." Also, we work really hard to develop self-efficacy in our students and ownership of learning and behavior. And he clearly articulated his action plan for how he was going to make corrections for next year. And lastly, we encourage our students to be examples for others. And he understands his role when he writes, "I will be an example to the little ones at our school." As you know, this is a new school and we have many distinguished technological features. We have smart boards in every classroom, telephones in every classroom, one-to-one laptops, a robotic lab, all of that. But as he says in this letter and as he understands that it really is what happens within the school, both academically and socially, that makes the difference, and he gets it. So I say that to say that Elliott Street School is a school where we expect more and we hope to achieve more. And I welcome you to join us next Thursday, August 31st, as we welcome our parents here for a meet and greet in the playground. And with that, have a good evening and a good meeting and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chairman Lewis?
Yes.
I'd ask the Chair right now, I'd like to put a motion on the floor so we can go into executive session immediately.
Executive session for what purpose, Mr. Padilla?
Personnel.
Okay, is a motion for executive session, talk about personnel, or second?
Second.
Are we also talking about negotiations at this time?
Yes.
Okay, so motions, and I would imagine attorney-client privilege. So this is a motion placed on the record by Mr. Padilla, second, Ms. Garcia to talk about executive session, talk about matters pertaining to attorney-client privilege, updating negotiations and personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries, go on to executive session. The Board will be going to executive session for a while and we will return.
Hold on, Ms. Gaddy.
I just wondered, are we going to give the public amount of time so they know what to expect when they return?
That'd be a short, short executive session.
We'll be back in about an hour and a half.
We're going to do a quick 20-minute reset.
Are we back?
Can I get a motion to reconvene?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put a motion on the table to reconvene the meeting.
Motion reconvene into open sessions, or second?
Second.
Bledsoe. This is a motion to reconvene into open session from executive session, moved by Mr. Padilla, second by Mr. Bledsoe, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries, we're back in open session. Back to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
Recognitions? There's no recognitions this morning. So can I get approval on minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Is this a motion to vote on all the minutes as one?
Yes, motion.
Okay, who moved, Ms. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Second?
Gaddy.
Gaddy. This is a motion to take all the minutes as one. We're talking June 13, 2017, business meeting, June 20, 2017, regular meeting, July 8, retreat meeting, and July 20, retreat meeting. This is only to take them as a package, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Who abstained?
Carter and Fonseca.
This is to take them as a package now, right?
Oh, okay.
Okay, you want, you're still abstaining, it's just, no?
Well, I say no.
Okay. That's fine. So we got seven, four, and two extensions to take it as a package. Is there a motion to vote on the minutes?
Motion.
Bledsoe. Garcia on the second. This is a motion to actually vote on approval of the one, two, three, four sets of, four sets of minutes. Roll call, Bledsoe.
Yes.
Carter.
Abstain.
Ms. Fonseca.
Abstain.
Gaddy.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Padilla.
Yes.
Chair Lewis.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven, zero, two extensions. All minutes are approved, next item.
Well, now have our student rep report. From Eastside High School, Ms. Gina.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't already know, my name is Gina Mitos and I am the new student representative. I am a rising senior at Eastside High School, but I will be representing the entire district. Thank you to all the students that gave me the opportunity to speak on your behalf. As we approach this school year, I become more and more eager to begin my role officially. I have three major goals for this school year and they go as follows. One, the student representative role has clearly not been used to its potential by past representatives and it is not necessarily their fault. Luckily, I do not have to figure it out on my, figure out my position alone because I was given detailed advice from the previous student rep, Laura. Secondly, I have already worked on my own social media accounts and come in September, I will start to make it seen more by the public so that communication can become easier by all means. Lastly, I want to form an alliance with students from schools around Newark to bring real-life circumstances and concrete evidence to the Board. I will do my best to uncover all the unhinged complications that are occurring in the district. This cabinet will help me to do so. I look forward to this upcoming end of war. I wish you all a successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have the Board Chair's report. Good evening, Superintendent Sheriff, Vice Chair Padilla, fellow Board members, staff, family, and Newark community, those present and those viewing from home. I hope everyone had a safe and productive summer. A few weeks ago, I attended a State Board of Education meeting to witness the approval of our Q-SAC scores. Newark, we are one step closer to local control of our school district. When the state came into this district, I was only seven years old and attending Louise A. Spencer Elementary School. Now, when it is returning to our district, I will be the president of this Board. This opportunity brings tears to my eyes because we were once the rejected stones, but now we are the cornerstones. We are, we are the talk of the state of New Jersey and I'm confident that we will live up to the hype. We are ready for this huge responsibility and we are committed to serve every child of this district. Yesterday, I received a signed document of our personnel transition plan from the Commissioner. I would like to thank our personnel and policy members with the leadership, a Board member, Dashiene Carter, and Ms. Larissa for their hard work to make this happen. Tonight, you will witness the official signing of this document by State Superintendent Christopher Siff and myself. I am excited. I am excited because one, because, I am excited because we will now be able to decide our own destiny. Our destiny is in our hands. Now, in two weeks, we will welcome back our children to our school buildings. Over 35,000 children will come back to our buildings, expecting a safe and clean environment, expecting to be greeted by principals that know that they are more, that understand that they are more than capable to manage and operate their buildings, expecting to receive soft smiles and firm handshakes from teachers that understand that those next six to eight hours can impact the future of our community. Negatively can, negative, negative thoughts can destroy us, but positive thoughts can uplift us and bring us all together and most of all, empower our young people with their voice. As the president of this amazing Board, I would like to ask our families of the Newark Public Schools to join us as we move Newark Public Schools forward. Community, we need you to help us rebuild the village. We need to take responsibility for every child that walk through our doors. I am confident that this community will answer the call. I am confident because we stand on strong shoulders. I'm confident because we are Newark and together we can do it all. I, as the Board President, am eager and looking forward to that day when we can say, "We are now controlling the destiny of our educational experience." Thank you and God bless you all. We don't have no Board resolutions, so we'll now do our superintendent report.
Thank you, President. Thank you very much for your comments. I too am excited. Okay, got it, okay. And welcome, members of the community, we'll be brief. We, I do want to explain what executive session means. It may have been somewhat mysterious. We have an obligation to perform the business of this Board in public. There are certain very limited exceptions. For example, when you're talking about a legal matter involving a pending lawsuit or talking about a personnel issue, those are two of many possible exceptions. And the law then allows you to take that piece of very private business out of the public eye and that's called the executive session. So the Board had a matter, or two, or three of that nature to cover off. We do appreciate your patience. I know it was frustrating and I am sorry if it seemed a little bit mysterious, but that is something that is, you will, you will see as we move into local control that we will, that will be part of the regular rhythm of Board business. So thank you again for your patience. We are on the cusp of a brand-new school year and we are incredibly, incredibly excited. I owe a debt of gratitude to many people, but I will tell you that there's so many things that go on in the summer that don't go on any scorecard. Work that's done to prepare buildings, to buy books, to assign teachers. We've done, not to mention the summer school program, which I'll briefly touch on in a moment, but these are the things that make the operation of a enterprise that has 5,700 employees, 5,600 employees, and serves 36,000 children and has an annual budget of approaching a billion dollars. There is just an incredible amount of work that is involved in an enterprise of that complexity and an enterprise of such profound significance to the future of so many people. You don't see or hear from many of the folks who are doing that work behind the scenes, but I just want to personally extend my gratitude to members of our team for the incredible work they've done this summer. Some of it is very visible, like the facilities work, like the summer school operation, but I am especially proud, as I speak to you today, of the work done by our academic team. That is, after all, why we come to work every day and why this Board gives so freely of their time. There has been very, very, very deep work that has been done by the Chief Academic Officer, the Deputy Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendents, to deeply understand exactly where we are succeeding and where we have work to do and to build a program and student assignments and teacher assignments to reflect our ambition to continue on that upward trajectory. We're more than happy, I think, proper, a proper function for the PNI Committee and I know that my colleagues, whom I just mentioned, are looking forward to continuing that conversation with Board Member Owens and the members of that, members of that committee. But it is very deep work and as somebody who has been involved in schools in a number of different capacities for, I hate to say this, more than two and approaching three decades, it really stands out in my eye, the depth of the work that has been done and I'm very, very excited to see it come to fruition. I also want to call out, and she hates it when I call her out, but I just want to call out our personnel team, our HR team, our human capital team. We are about to begin the school year with over 98% of our vacancies filled. I have literally never known another district, certainly not another large urban district, that is able to make that claim. Sorry, Sarah, but I want to call out Sarah. She hates it, she's the most modest person under this, but thank you, Sarah, for your pers- Sarah, it's really an incredible amount of work. She, of course, works with Larissa. I know you hate this too, raise your hand, some people, she hates that. But it's an amazing amount of work and we also appreciate the close collaboration and with the Personnel Committee of the Board, who has been very, very active, Ms. Carter and others, in working, by the way, holding our feet to the fire, so it's been a lot of work. Let me quickly touch on a couple of items, we can just flip, flip the page. As the President just, just mentioned, we received a letter from the state confirming or announcing that we have hit the mark and hit it, hit it with style in terms of QZAC. We now have not only scored above 80 and as the numbers reflect on the Board, well above 80 in all the required, in all the required areas, including instruction, including governance. But in a letter that I received from the Commissioner, she said very clearly that we've also met the second prong of the test, which is that there is now confidence that we are able to sustain this work over time. And I anticipate, she indicated she will be recommending to the State Board that there be a vote, it may very well be at the September meeting, which is coming up, it will certainly be early, early in the fall. So that, that is indeed good news. And again, there's so many things that don't make the scorecard and don't happen, but this is an incredibly complicated political dance. I don't know what that's about, but we're, welcome, welcome to the meeting. What's that, is that for you? Okay, sorry. Feel like I'm in a Woody Allen movie. And the amount of work that went into satisfying those requirements and demonstrating, I want to thank our financial team led by School Business Administrator Wilson and a cast of many, many, many others, who are too long a list to mention, for, for the work that went into that as well. Just so the community knows what happens next, the Board will vote. Presumably, they will certify the scores and they will vote to return local control, but I want to be very clear about this because as often as all of us have said this, it hardly ever gets reported accurately. What the vote will be, will be to commence a process by which a transition plan is developed in collaboration with this Board, in collaboration with the district, this Board, and in, but it is a, it is being, the principal drafts person is the Commissioner of Education. That plan will then be presented to this Board. I will tell you that for a variety of reasons, most of which have nothing to do with me, I have strongly advocated behind the scenes that that process happened quickly, but nothing happens instantly in this, in this world, so I would expect that to happen over the course of, of the fall. And we will certainly, as we get clarity, we don't know, we don't know the particulars, but as we get clarity about what that transition plan will look like, we will then obviously make sure that that is something that is publicly available for, for review. I do want to mention, as sort of echoing the President's earlier comment, that one of the areas involved on QZAC, there are five. There's governance, there's instruction, there's destruction, there is fiscal management, there's operations, and there's personnel. One of them has, we received 100 last time. We went through exactly the process we talked about before. There has been some very deep work done by members of this Board, working with our human capital team. It has resulted in a signed plan, a signed transition plan for transitioning personnel back. And I believe in a moment that we are going to formally sign that together, thus making that piece of the transition formal. But what I do want to do is, I don't know whether you knew that I was going to do this, Larissa, but if you could, we could put page four, it's already up there. If you could just share with the community, please, you could come up here to this podium. I'm, no, I'm kidding, that's right.
I'll take the one with the microphone, thanks.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, members of the community and the Board. To echo the Superintendent's summary that's on the slide up there, we have engaged Board Member Carter and myself and other members of the Board have worked on a transition plan for personnel specifically. We met 15 times. We've met with outside experts, other Boards, state representatives. We submitted a plan after showing it through, in Board retreats in March and April. We submitted a plan to the state that would be documenting how we will transition all voting authority around personnel matters to the Board. We submitted it in April, they requested revisions in June, and then the Attorney General's Office provided comments that we revised in July and August. And as of yesterday, at 2:30 in the afternoon, we did receive a signed by the Commissioner document saying our plan has been approved, which means we can move forward with our next steps in implementation, which I'm going to talk about if we could flip to the next slide. As you can see, the transition plan has outlined eight key areas of personnel that the Board will have voting authority over. There is an important note in our transition plan, as this has been a long time since we have had votes on this, that each area requires a level of training for the Board and the district, about what this looks like to do at the local level, as well as in certain areas, developing some policies and procedures that have to go along with it. We have not waited for the state to approve the plan, to start the training. So if you'll see, the first session is on confidentiality, closed session, such as the one that we just had, and ethics. We have, we provided that training in April and again, I believe, in July for new Board members. We have also conducted our collective negotiating training and our hiring training. We are working on some of the other components for collective negotiating and hiring in order to have those returned. Our hope is that we will be able to submit a report to the state in September that outlines our completion of those activities, after which, the Board will then have voting authority over those areas specifically, collective negotiating and hiring. Hiring will come back in three stages. The first month will be central office staff, the second will be school administrators, the third will be teachers, just to sort of get the flow of this work into the agenda for Board discussion and approval. We are already planning our next training on compensation and benefits to be taking place in the September retreat, on the 23rd, I believe, and then that will be, that area will be completed. We will then start to schedule the remaining areas of certification, transfers, tenure charges, RIFs, discipline and performance management, so that we can return those areas as well. Our anticipation is these will continue to come each month. There'll be more and more for the Board to vote on so that probably by the end of the year, everything will be back on the agenda for the Board's formal vote. Each time we complete an area, we have to send a report to the state as documentation and that's really the final step before they can start voting on it. So off we go with personnel.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I think we've covered, if we could turn to page seven, please. So it was a very busy summer academically and we had thousands and thousands of students participate in various programs, both run directly by the district and outside opportunities of organizations we partnered, partnered with. Some of you may have seen recent news coverage of a very significant, very significant second-grade literacy initiative. We identified rising second graders, soon-to-be third graders who were behind in reading and reading, of course, is, you know, the fundamental pathway to future educational success. We identified them, we worked with schools, our Assistant Superintendents worked with principals to really recruit these kids to come into a special program, which put a special emphasis on, on reading. We had a very substantial increase in that. We worked with uncommon schools to collaborate and to share best practices and we felt that that program had very good success. I know that, that, I believe it was Board Member Owens has asked for a full report on the summer activities and appropriately for outcome studies and for the kind of analytics that go with the hype and the headlines. And I know we're committed to that and I believe, Mr. Hagerty, that that investigation is underway and you're, it's your intention to start with a committee report on that and then we can bring it forward as the committee chair wants. But the particulars about, you know, did this work? Did it check, did it affect outcomes? Did people show up, attendance and all the rest? I think the news you'll find is good, but those kind of analytics are exactly the kind of question that I think this Board should be asking. of question that I think this Board should be asking for. I'll let you read the rest of the slide, but I do want to call out NJIT and Stevens Institute for their incredible generosity in hosting many of our students in sort of college-level programs. I am going to actually, again, skip this slide, because I don't, I know we took a lot of time with that, I'm going to move to Page 10, and we've covered a lot of this as well. With regard to staffing, not only do we have 98% staffing as of this moment, but we've made great strides in some of our traditional shortage areas. And those traditional shortage areas are in math, and in science, and in special education, and in bilingual education. While we still have a number of vacancies, and by the way, there are always vacancies in any school district at any time of the year, you will never get to 100%. For most of the open positions now, we actually have candidates who have been through the process, and it's particularly true in mathematics, and I believe, special education. A big shout out to Montclair State University, who worked with us to develop more bilingual certified teachers, so that remains a challenge, but it is a much less significant challenge than it has been in years past. I do want to thank, again, the facilities, the facilities team for their powerful work around the buildings. We're happy to share a list of those, you know, asbestos removal, and fire suppression, installation, a lot of repairs, and painting, and a lot of the work by our fine trades folks. Happy to share you the details, but there are, just a tremendous amount of activity went on over the course of the summer. We are also in the process of moving to our new central office. That building, which as you know, is at 765 Broad, basically a block away from our current headquarters, it's a two-seater. There has been enormous amount of work, that building is being built out, the interior is substantially framed. Now, I don't know if Mr. Ballard is here. There he is, sorry, blocked by the table. Mr. Ballard, who works on Val's team, has been leading that charge. A little piece of work that was, has been needed doing for about 20 years, is clearing out the storage area in the basement. That has been, I mean, if you went down there, you would have been shocked and appalled by the amount of stuff that has been gathered there over the years. Ms. Wilson, where is Ms. Wilson? Ms. Wilson, will you give a shout out to Gordon, please? You will, but we had a team that emptied it out and disposed of material, gave a lot of it away, and so on. It was a great, a great piece of work. I am especially excited that the bottom floor of that is going to be a 9,000-foot science lab that will eventually accommodate every single student in Newark, and give them an opportunity for absolutely top-quality, hands-on science education. And will also have two essentially television studios in it, that will allow through an extraordinary piece of software, to send interactive science lessons to our science teachers into our schools, literally into every school, into every device, into every smartboard, into every Chromebook, into every phone. Once we get that software up and running, it will also be an opportunity to send professional development from a central location, either targeted into particular schools, to particular faculties. It'll be an opportunity for our colleges to reach out to students, be an opportunity to provide SAT training, and ACT training, and the like. It creates not only quality science education, that will expose our students to the abundance of careers in the sciences, but also create an opportunity to support our terrific teachers in their work as well. The school year is upon us, our principals returned, and I was privileged to be there with them on the 1st of August. People think that this is a job where you get the summer off, hardly does it work that way. Our Vice Principal's returned on the 9th, leadership members have been participating, leadership team members, rather, in what we call our PLI, or Principal Leadership Institute. We again are grateful to Montclair State University for hosting us during that week. And training has continued from the 21st of August, and continues actually through this week. More than half of our, approximately half of our educators in the District have participated in this, as you know, more than, I think it's almost exactly half of our schools voluntarily signed up for an extended year. That includes extra learning, extra training, in addition to extra learning time for our students. And again, the quality of the training, the reviews I have gotten from our teachers and principals have been uniformly positive. And then, let me just end with this, which is, of course, a central point of the exercise. All of these things we're talking about are inputs, right? There are things we do to enable students to learn better, faster, more successfully. Those are outputs. Those are things like graduation rate, those are competency in reading, and writing, and critical thinking, and analytic skills. We are not about the inputs. Whenever we do an input, we do it in order to see whether it is working around giving every child in this city an opportunity for success in life, regardless of whatever circumstances they happen to come into life, they came into. And that is our commitment. One measure of that, not the only measure, I quickly add, because this is often misunderstood, one measure of that is a federally required standardized test that is given annually every year. In this state, it is called a PARK test. It is beyond doubt the best assessment of reading and math skills that has ever been developed, and that's not just me saying that, that is reviewers from across the country and across the disciplines. The best part about it is it does not, it is not a fill-in-the-box test, it requires demonstration of critical learning skills, and writing skills, and analytic skills. It can't be beat with drill-and-kill and workbooks, you really have to teach the core standards in order to be successful. This is the third test administration of PARK, it was given last spring. And we got the information earlier than ever in the state's history, we got the results in June. By the way, you can never get it any sooner than that, because these are not machine-scored. A big part of the tests are human-scored, the writing samples, the critical thinking, analysis, and so on. Unlike some other tests, which are kind of like fill-in A, B, C, D, multiple choice, these are much more sophisticated, akin to the ones you see in quality education systems across the country, New York being a leading example. We once again showed significant improvement in both ELA and math, and I'm going to show you some of that information in a moment. The participation rate on the test was up again. It sort of rolled out several years ago with a fair amount of commotion. This year, almost 94% of our students participated in the test, and we were very, very pleased to see that. We will give you a full and comprehensive, highly detailed, I've seen the PowerPoint, it's about that high, presentation about that, both in committee, Board Member Owens, and as well as in this forum, but let me give you sort of the highlights. If you could turn, oh, look at that. You will see the trajectory over the last three years. We have improved every single year. I will tell you that if you look at all the grades together, we're up about 2.7 percentile points, not percentage, percentile points, it's more in percentage terms, and 2.8 in math, but what is, and by the way, those numbers in the aggregate compare well with the progress in the state, but here's what's really exciting to me. In 3rd through 8th grade, our future scholars, our future high school students, the gains were substantially higher than that. About 3.5 points in reading, and finally, a breakthrough in math, a four-point gain in math. There are some highs, there are some lows, there's some, not every school in every grade did brilliantly, but when you look at them in the aggregate, I believe every grade, every subject but one was up. And it was a very, very successful year, and if you look at it from a two-year trajectory, this is exactly the graph you want to see, with the numbers rising up. Now, I also want to quickly add that there were some areas of disappointment. We did not do well in Algebra I, we had a significant large, much, much larger number of test takers this year, and we're doing a lot of work in that area. The high school gains across the entire state were basically, basically flat, very, very modestly up in one, I think. And our gains kind of paralleled that, so the state as a whole sort of did not make a lot of progress in high school. And I will also tell you that we are set, we are, if you look at not growth, but proficiency, we have a long, long way to go. Nobody should be satisfied with where we are. But what we are very, very, very pleased about is the continued progress, and I also feel that we are positioned this year to really have a breakthrough year, for reasons you'll hear about, you hear about down the road. So with that, I want to hand the microphone back to you, and I think you have something in mind for us to do.
Before, before, do we have any Board Members with questions? No questions? Let's sign this document.
Yes, sir, do you have a pen? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Next order, a business, public participation. I don't have that list.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the public participation portion of the meeting. As a reminder, time limits for all speakers are enforced, there is no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. Speakers are required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of this meeting is limited to 1 hour and 30 minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that are not permitted include, but are not limited to, naming District employees and engaging in personal attacks, slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meetings, or inciting others to do so. Public participation at these Board meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public the opportunity to address the Board and Administration on issues of public concern, not as a forum for two-way dialogue with the Board members or District officials. The Superintendent designated or the Board Chair may respond to questions either at the end of the session, or responses may be provided at a later time. The Superintendent or Board Chair may interrupt any speaker or terminate any speaking privilege if the comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally directed statement may be slanderous or defaming, and the individual may be liable for his or her statements. Attempts to hijack or filibuster proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the Board Chair, District officials, repetitive and truculent speech, or other disregarded rules decorum are not tolerated and may subject the individual or group to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the meeting may be adjourned.
First Speaker, John Abagon. Not appearing. Denise Cole.
Denise Cole, 2 Keyer Avenue, Apartment 5D. I'm here today as the Vice President of George Washington Carver in about the lease negotiation. I want to know from Tave Padella, the Vice President, was the policy followed for the expansion of that space? And if the policy was not followed for the expansion of that space, how are you all going to rectify that? And second of all, we want you, because you got to vote in September, to tell us who is eligible to vote and who is eligible to not, because you got two members up there that have children in charter schools that cannot vote. And you need five votes come September for that lease. So we need you to explain to us what is the process going to be. If we're moving back to local control, we need to understand the policy, and what procedure was supposed to take place for that expansion that did not take place in those talks. Also, we want to expand our pre-K and kindergarten program in those spaces, and for two years, we have not been able to, because we gave them the original lease, then we did the amendment to extend it for two years when they were supposed to leave, and then they needed another two years, and we gave them another two years, and now they have no lease. Because I just opened it, Ms. Val, I can tell you, and I was denied, because there is no lease presently in place for Seek Academy. Also, I would like, Tave, you all, to tell us why Val was asked to resign. Because, I mean, Charlotte, not you, Val, I'm sorry. Sorry, Val, you still sitting there? I mean, why Charlotte was asked to resign? And you can't say that's a personnel private issue, because I read the policy, and the policy says that once the issue is resolved, then it has to be transparent to the public, since you, I don't know who accepted her resignation, if it came before the Board or it didn't come before the Board, who accepted her resignation, and why, when we're transitioning to local control? So my question today is that we, the public school parents at George Washington Carver/Brew Street, want our space to expand pre-K and kindergarten. We have 100% financing of pre-K and kindergarten, which we could use in our budget. And there's not one choice over another, so the building belongs to us, so in September, we're asking you not to renew that lease, to give them notice, by the next school year, they must be out of our space.
Next Speaker, Yolanda Johnson.
Good evening, Yolanda Johnson, 278 Goldsmith Avenue. Here tonight, for several reasons, just want to be clear on Shabazz High School, I am the PTSA President at Shabazz High School, and I wanted to be clear on the programs, the cosmetology program, the culinary arts program, was it going to be operational in September and ready, at least the first phase? I wanted to be clear on that, if you guys can answer that. And then I want to talk about the co-location. In 2016, I met with Ms. Toni Antonia Sullivan, O'Sullivan, the leader of Seek Academy, and we discussed the expansion of space back in 2016. I'm starting to see a pattern, I have no issues with it, I talked about the gym space being negotiated. When we had Dr. Boykins at George Washington Carver, nobody said anything about that. Now we're here again with Brew Street School, 12 students being placed outside of classrooms that are custom for those deaf and hard-of-hearing students. And still, the lease was up again in 2016, and we're still talking about space. We didn't hear about it at any Board meetings, the Board members didn't know anything about it, again, with the gym space as well. So I'm asking the Board, what are we doing here in our District? Are we doing illegal things? Are we exemplifying or displaying bad behavior? And then we say we want our children to excel? How can our children excel when we're not properly negotiating things? Another thing, the reason why George Washington Carver is under-enrolled for Seek to see space to be used, is because you have Edward Hugh, who sits at the negotiating table, and also sits at the enrollment center with the parents. So I'm asking, as a parent, as a parent leader, as a community member, to at least choose one thing for him to do, because he can't negotiate our space, and then... one thing for him to do, because he can't negotiate our space, and then sit and, and be at the enrollment center enrolling students, because that's conflict of interest. How do we know, board members, how do we know that he, that things are not being purposely under-enrolled so that Seek can use space? So I am here today to say, we want to end co-location now. We want to end co-location now, because guess what? Norcollegic just moved out of their building. They could have put Seek Academy in there. Seek Academy knew that they needed space in 2016. We're in a 2017, 2018 school year. We're saying end co-location now. We're saying that we want our space. We're saying that those Bruce Street Schools for the deaf, because that program is 100 years old, and those children have been using that school for the longest, they should have to move out of their space to accommodate tenants. We're the landlords. So I'm asking to end co-location now. Please accept, please accept our plea. I am not going to give up. I will take it a little higher. I'm not going to give up, because Bruce Street School need their space. And we should not be moving Bruce Street School, we should not be moving Bruce, Bruce Street School out of their space to accommodate a charter school that's doing illegal moves and, and wasn't negotiated, and it's not negotiated, and they don't have a current lease. I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm asking that you guys follow the guidelines, the rules and the laws that's promulgated for the policies and the negotiating rules.
Next speaker, Louise Roundtree.
Good afternoon, Louise Roundtree, 40 Washington Street.
Afternoon.
Many of our youth are in crisis. Suicides, drug abuse, sexual transmitted diseases are growing rapidly in our communities. And as you may know, New Jersey is an epidemic state in terms of heroin use. Essex County, our rates for STD cases are constantly on the rise. In addition, youth-to-youth violence is a real problem. These numbers are really staggering, and these are statistics and issues that our students have to deal with every day, going to school, trying to do their best in our, in our schools. And in addition to that, we have the whole social media aspect, the cyberbullying, the sexting, and so forth and so on. My name again is Ms. Roundtree. I am the founder of the Academy of Unlimited Possibilities. It is a program that is designed to develop character and to give the skills needed to enhance social and emotional wellness. I have 25 years of experience as an educator, as a teacher, and 15 years as a substance awareness coordinator in this district, which was really, really an awesome position. And from that experience, I learned firsthand what our children need to be successful as they move through this venture in their life. That is where the Academy of Unlimited Possibilities grew out of, and as the name, you can probably understand, our children can do all things. This unique self-enrichment program is, is different in a way, because it's a holistic approach. We look to develop the mind, the body, and the spirit. We look into giving them the skills that they need to foster their, their lives through this journey that they're going through and into adulthood, with such skills as cognitive decision-making, conflict resolution, goal-setting. We have, in terms of, we have a platform that we also use for them to express their talent, because our students are so, so very talented. We also have what we call our GPS system, which is a greatness positioning system, which is going to allow our students to continuously work with their goals and their objectives. When I worked with, I had the pleasure to work with the ASPIRA after-school program at Moren School, and the participants of our program, the Academy of Unlimited Possibilities, they really had some takeaways. One student, she really expressed how happy she was working with her vision plan and her goals. Another young man, he said to me, Ms. Roundtree, I'm so happy that I learned how to deal with conflict, because we teach them how to meditate, how to relax, and just the whole process of dealing with the conflict resolution. In conclusion, I would like to say that once our students complete our program, they will know their intrinsic value, they will know the value of who they are, and they will not be engaged in a lot of behaviors, they'll think twice. I'm asking to partner with the Newark Public Schools with this program, to be given this opportunity to work with the Newark Public Schools.
Nafisa Webster. I'm sorry, the paper was sideways, I couldn't really read it.
She's not here. Ms. Cole said she's not here.
Next speaker, Sheila Montague. Not here? All right, next speaker, Deborah Smith Gregory.
Good evening, Board. My name is Deborah Smith Gregory, and I serve as the President of the Newark Branch NAACP. And, Board members, I would like to direct my remarks to you. I have a couple, something that I prepared, but something that came up when I heard the superintendent give his report preparing for the school openings. And as a former employee, as most of you know, I am aware of how vague that school opening report that you all just received for what's going to happen in the next two weeks is very, very poor. And just some things that I thought about as I was listening. What's the status of transportation, since we do transport our children back and forth all across town? What's the strategy with the lunch applications? Because we, our money comes from that. What's the hotline in the event that problems come up? Where do the student, where would families call to get information? And what are some of the first-day activities that are going to be happening that you all should know about so that you can decide if you want to attend them and, you know, disperse yourself? Now, that's just off the top of my head, listening to the superintendent's report. Which leads me to the reason why I did come to speak, and that is that I said at the business meeting, and I am saying it again, that we have a desperate need, well, first of all, congratulations for the personnel transition. But there is a desperate need for a forensic audit for operations, facilities, fiscal management, e, program and instruction before the local control is given back fully to you. Now, Board President, you have been here the longest, so you know the fights, you know the fights about the leases, when you all voted them down and you were overridden by the superintendent, and all of the other things that have happened. You know where the skeletons are personally, because you've been here. So now, under your watch, it's your responsibility to make sure that all the things that you went through, that you, that you did not have control over, that you don't get blamed for. Because you just said, I'm going to be the board chair when we return to local control. So I implore you to, you have partners, Montclair State has been touted at least two or three times tonight, Rutgers, you have partnerships with philanthropic institutions that will partner with you and assist you in making sure that the house that you receive has been appraised, evaluated, and is in order.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Next speaker, Agent Norton.
Agent Norton, 327 Care Avenue. Thank you, Board, community members. So today I'd like to talk about possibilities. As a teacher, I first need to know where I want to take my students. For this, I need to know the possibilities. What is possible for them to do? What is possible, possible for them to learn? What is possible for them to achieve? And then, once I identify that, then I need to understand what I need to do as a teacher to get them to reach those possibilities. I do that through lesson plans, teacher collaborations, building partnerships with parents. May be wondering what's up with being a teacher, why she's talking about being a teacher, and these possibilities. Because I see the possibility of Carver, Bruce, and Seek. What's possible there? Learning, collaboration, achievement, parent partnership. I've been hearing a lot of rhetoric within the last few weeks, and some of these rhetorics has something to do with adult problems. I'm not here to solve adult problems, not as a teacher. I'm here to solve kid problems, student problems. Sometimes we get caught up in the adult problems that we lose sight of the students. And it's not that, and isn't that why we're here, for the students? And if we're truly here, then let's have a conversation that's geared towards solving student problems. So I stand here today advocating for Carver, advocating for Bruce, advocating for Seek, advocating for possibilities. So let's fight for public safety in and around Carver. Let's fight for, and, let's fight for healthy foods being served to students. There are more important issues that need to be addressed than displacing Newark students. If changing hearts and minds to value education is at the top of one's mission, then we need to focus on issues that are affecting Newark students. And I know that's possible.
Shadiquee Goldman. Not here? Next speaker.
My name is Reginald Smith. Should have been changed. Should have been there for Sadiquee.
No, you have to be on the list. If you're not Shadiquee, we can't speak.
Was it there? Was it, was it changed?
No.
They didn't change it.
Did you sign up, sir?
Yes.
No, it's not up here.
So can I speak or no?
No, sir.
Okay.
Are you having a hard time?
Masaya Alameen.
I knew you was going to say it wrong.
No, you say it right.
It's Maesa Alameen, 507 Clinton Place. I'm here today for Seek Academy. My, one of my youngest kids attends Seek Academy, and, and I just want to say, like, the school is within our area. It's about seven to eight blocks away. I can't afford for my child to keep going to schools that's not in the area. We had an issue over the year where, as though, he was being bused. He was being bused to his after-care program, and a lot of times, he was either being left on the bus because they wasn't picking him up, and I don't want to go through the headaches again. It happened several times, and his after-school program wasn't picking him up, so I don't want to have to go through that. I like the fact that he's in a school close to home. I like the fact that they have the after-care program there, and I would love for him to continue to stay in Newark, on Clinton Place and Aldine, and not be transferred somewhere else. I would like for Seek Academy to stay there if possible. I love the school. My child loves the school. We're, we're there all the time, all of my kids, they attend the team schools, and I look forward for them to stay. Nothing else.
Thank you.
Chair.
Diane's not here.
Excuse me, Chair, I'm sorry. Can I speak, say something?
No, we're at the end.
Okay.
At the end.
All right, thank you.
Diane, she's not here. Shira.
Hello, my name is Shira Baron. I'm a former teacher and now an attorney at the Education Law Center. I served as a member of the School Discipline Committee convened by the Opportunity Youth Network and Newark Public Schools. I'm here to thank the Newark Public Schools and the Board of Education for taking a bold step in the right direction to end the school-to-prison pipeline. These improved disciplinary policies signal progress, but we still have work to do to get to a place where suspending a student from school itself is no longer an option. As an educator, and now as an attorney representing kids who have been suspended and expelled from school, I have watched how suspensions impact kids. Oftentimes, the students I have worked with have experienced trauma at some point in their lives, and rarely have they received the support and the services they need to appropriately deal with those experiences. Suspensions don't teach kids those skills. Instead, suspended students are frequently spending minimally supervised time at home or on the streets. And then, when they return to school, they become frustrated and confused by the material after having missed out on all that classroom time. This leads to acting out again, which again leads to suspension, and so the cycle goes. Further and further marginalizing are kids who need the most support. Beyond negatively impacting individual students, zero-tolerance school discipline policies have not been shown to make schools safer. In fact, school policies like those lead to more students becoming disconnected from the school system, dropping out, making contact with the criminal justice system. While we do celebrate the progressive action by the Newark Board of Education in passing new school discipline policies, the implementation of these policies matters. We are particularly hopeful that the Board will pay special attention to the implementation of restorative justice practices. These are alternative disciplinary practices that empower students to resolve conflicts in small facilitated groups. These practices focus on getting to the root of conflicts in school and helping students determine productive and appropriate ways to address those issues. We must ensure that our families are aware of these disciplinary changes, that principals and teachers are trained in implementing them, and that schools receive the resources, the resources and the support to build positive school culture. Equally as important, the Education Law Center believes families need to know their rights so they can be informed advocates for their kids. I hope the Board continues its good work and begins to look at another contributing factor of the school-to-prison pipeline, school-based arrests, where disciplined infractions are being treated as crimes and students are being locked up for low-level offenses. Again, thank you, and we stand ready to support you in the work ahead.
Excuse me, excuse me, don't, can you, can you leave your card with Nancy, if you have a card? Thank you. Next speaker, Mary. Cole gone? She here? Once, going twice. Next speaker, Johnny Latner.
Good afternoon. My name is Johnny Latner, 357 Grove Street. Sitting back there today, I listened to you, listened to all of you, say in reference to the upcoming school year. And I was thinking to myself, because I was going to say something, but I kind of changed my mind, and I'm thinking, and I'm hearing the situation at George Washington Carver. You know, the Seek, you got George Washington Carver, you got Bruce Street, deaf or the blind, and you have both sides sitting and wondering what is going to happen for the upcoming year. But the problem that I have is that decisions was made, and neither side was questioning about the decision that was made, which is sad, because the board didn't know, you know, some of the board members didn't know what was going on, some of the parents who own both sides, I mean, both sides, traditional charter, I mean, traditional public schools and charter schools, would, don't, didn't know, and the principal was put up under pressure and didn't even know it was illegal. Exactly, Ms. Johnson. So, you know, yes, yeah, we look forward to a new school year, but do we really want the same old things that's been happening over and over and over again? the same old things that's been happening over and over and over again, where we have to sit here and fight as a community for school? Parents are parents. Students are students. It's not about one side or the other side. It's about the student. And I want to take my five minutes to say, in this upcoming year, let's don't go through that battle. Let's not fight that fight. Let's work for the student. And for people who making these decisions, please include the community when you make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latner. Next speaker, Sharon Smith. Nada Perry. Last speaker, William Simpson.
My name is William Simpson. I'm with My Brothers Keeper Newark. I served as a member of the School Discipline Committee convened by the Opportunity Youth Network and Newark Public Schools. I'm here today to thank Newark Public Schools and the Advisory Board for taking a first step in the right direction as it comes to school discipline. In 2015, Mayor Rocker joined President Obama to launch My Brothers Keeper Newark because he believed in the unlimited potential of our young men of color and the vital role they play in our city's future. However, we have to be real. Newark and our country face some uncomfortable truths. From birth, young men of color are a risk, and as they persist through life, it doesn't decrease, it only increases. African-American and Latino boys are three times more likely to be suspended than white boys. African-American students make up 30% of school-based arrests in this country, 30%, but only 16% of the student population. These numbers are eerily similar to the percentage of black men that we see in prison in the United States. No child should face jail time for any minor disciplinary infraction. We need to teach our young people how to build relationships, resolve conflicts, and restore trust when it is broken in the same way we teach ABCs and 1-2-3s. There are important life, these are important life lessons that My Brothers Keeper is committed to work with, the Opportunity Youth Network, and Newark Public Schools, to impart to all of our children and especially our young men of color. In closing, I have to talk about the words that the young man wrote to, the young man wrote to the principal earlier. And I think this exemplifies the direction we need to be moving into, right? School discipline is something that we need to address now, and that young man has realized that he's going to face some challenges, right? There's going to be some struggle, but at some point, somebody said, without struggle, there's no progress. And we are responsible for embracing that young man and letting them know that we are a supportive, caring community, and we're here for him. I applaud the principal and the district for creating an environment where that young man can thrive, where in the event when discipline is required, restorative justice is used as a framework. Thank you for your action and support of the recommended policies and for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. William, William, can you just stand for one minute? I want to recognize William Simpson. Everyone know that I've been men who've been volunteering around the district on certain Mondays of the month, going to different schools, speaking to our young men, and it been by William spearheading it through My Brothers Keeper. So I just want to give him a round of applause and let him know we appreciate him. Board members, any board members before I make my comments?
Good evening, everyone, members of the community, my fellow board members, Superintendent Surf, the BA Valerie Wilson. I have a strong stance on this Seek, Carver, Bruce Street issue. I chair facilities, and I was extremely, extremely bothered by what I was hearing from my fellow board members and community members regarding this lease. So I went to the superintendent's office. I asked to speak with him. He granted my request, and I blatantly, flat-out asked him, and I'm gonna ask him again here in front of all of you. Mr. Surf, is there any policy within MPS, any city ordinance, or any state statutes that mandates you to speak to anyone to negotiate a lease with KIP? I went to Ms. Wilson. Ms. Wilson, is there any policy that we hold that we have to mandatory inform the community that we are going to enter negotiations to a lease with any other school?
There's no statute that exists.
Mr. Surf, again I ask you, do we have negotiations with a lease going on right now?
We do.
Okay, so with that being said, no board member last month was given any type of information regarding any lease. Is that true, Mr. Surf?
There's no lease to present right now.
Okay, so there was no type of negotiation going on. So, so we did, I did ask Mr. Surf.
By the way, I want to, I want to be clear. There is an expired lease we're negotiating at a possible extension.
Well, I'm really referring to the current situation now.
Correct, you're right, correct.
I did also go to Mr. Surf, and I hear that my community in Newark is appalled that this charter school is taking over the vast majority of this building. Is that true?
No, it is not, it's not true.
The other issue that I raised to Mr. Surf and Ms. Wilson, okay? Can we possibly get, can the board members by next month get a copy of a possible lease, what the negotiating terms are? And can you please specify to us, how much room are we talking about here? Could I ask for that?
I'm happy to answer that. You will have the opportunity to vote on a negotiated lease. I believe that, Ms. Wilson, that is next month, correct? That is correct, and I'd be happy to have graphics.
Now, I also want to put on record here tonight that as long as I sit on this board, I will never vote, ever, to put any kids out on the street, ever. That's number one. But I also want to say, okay, on the flip side, any charter school, that if we do have colocations in a charter school building, I will also vote no to put our kids out on the street. I heard plenty of community members here tonight talk about it has to be about the students and it has to be about the kids. And until someone, Mr. Surf, Ms. Wilson, someone from the district presents us with a lease occurring, what we're going forward, I'm not gonna comment. I will not address the community with anything like that unless we have something concrete in writing. I'm obligated to that as the Chair of the Operations Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carter.
Good evening, everyone. So there were some comments made tonight about Seek and Carver/Bruce co-location, and there are some comments that have been made. First, let me start off by saying, I'm a proud North Star Academy Charter School graduate, which I have never, ever been ashamed of. And one thing that North Star used to ask us is, when you succeed, what will you do? And my parents and I will respond, change history and give back to others. So that's my goal here on this board. Also, North Star has a core value, justice, which says, we act with fairness towards each other. We get involved when members of the community are in trouble or need help. We work to improve our community and the world. So I saw that Newark Public School was in trouble, therefore I ran for a seat on this board to improve Newark Public School and to fight for the students who needed a voice. Also, another core value is responsibility. It says we will participate fully in everything we do. We do not do things halfway. So that being said, I want to let the board members know that we are elected to serve a specific population, the traditional Newark Public School students. The community needs to be aware that we are not the mayor, we are not council members, we are not a part of the Assembly nor the Senate. We are here to represent traditional Newark Public School students. So in these conversations tonight, you tell me how you want to work with our students. Are you at KIP's board meeting advocating for more money for our students in Carver? Are you having discussions at your board meetings to see how we can move our students forward in this district? If not, then why should we be at this board meeting advocating about your students? It's about a community when it betters your students. Not once have you said outside of paying rent how you wanted to better Carver. You are not entitled to our space. I don't care how much taxes anyone pays. This is public property, and therefore you have to negotiate. As a board member, I will not be bullied into voting for your lease. So if you want to have a proper conversation, then that's something we can do. If you want to invite us to your board meeting and allow us to negotiate as to how you have the fundraising capabilities, so then begin to talk about how you can fundraise to help our students. Until we're having that conversation at your board meeting, there's no place for you at this board meeting. And as board members, we need to be mindful, as board members, we need to be mindful who we were elected to serve, and make sure we do so fully and wholeheartedly at all times.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Any other board members? Excuse me, excuse me. Order, order. This is not the city council meeting, this is the board meeting. Thank you. Excuse me, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. All right, thank you. All right. Ms. Johnson. Florita Johnson.
Board member, Ms. Johnson, not the community advocate, Ms. Yolanda Johnson. So, okay, I'm a parent too, but I'm also, no, I'm a parent for traditional.
Please let her speak, please let her speak.
I just wanted to, when Ms. Sediqua was gonna speak and a young gentleman stood, the young man stood up and said that he was gonna speak on her behalf, I just wanted to hear what he had to say. That's all, so I'll put a motion on the floor to let him speak.
She made the motion. I have to respect the motion. Any second? Ms. Gaddy, second? Can we get a vote?
You cannot, when you're telling.
Wait, 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 please.
You can't let nobody speak in your place.
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson, please let me control the board meeting, please, 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 please.
I'm not a she, I'm not a she.
Can I get a vote?
All right, this is, this is a motion to have a one-time exception to extend speaking to that individual moved by Ms. Johnson, second by Ms. Gaddy. Roll call, Bledsoe.
No.
Ms. Carter.
No.
Font second?
No.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Padilla?
No.
Cheryl Lewis?
No.
Motion fails.
All right.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add something, something else. So last week at the budget meeting, we had a conversation about the co-location of George Washington Carver, and there were some people that's in the community right now in this audience who were here, and there's some who were not present at this meeting. So I just wanted to make it clear again, once more, I asked Ms. Vow last week at the meeting, that was there anybody from Bruce Street School being displaced?
No one is, no student is being displaced. No, you asked, you asked me whether students were being displaced, and the answer is absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
And also, and.
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson.
All right, can we have a vote, please? Can we have the board members stop?
Please, 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 please. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson.
Johnson, let the board members keep their distance, please.
Please.
Completely true.
And I just wanted you to be clear as well that Ms. Wilson also spoke about the library and that there were going to be improvements done to the library, which is going to be co-located between George Washington Carver as well as Bruce Street, and they were both going to be using that space, and KIP was doing some remodelifications of that space.
What I did say last week is, yes, the library will be a common space used by both schools. There is a project to renovate that library being sponsored by KIP Academy. I have also made it clear to both school leaders that the expectation is that space will be common. It should be painted in a neutral color while having identity indicators for both schools, so that when children enter the space, they see that both schools are present. No one school is dominant over the other in that particular common space. That was, excuse, hold on, hold on, hold on. I can't answer you guys from here, right? So let me, let me also say this. The request that Seek has in place is to ask for two classrooms that are currently occupied by Bruce Street. That is what I said last week. Those two classrooms are, I think, locations 208 and 209. There are two art rooms. This year, Carver had one, Seek had one. One is more adjacent to Carver's space and one is more adjacent to Seek's space. There will be a flip of those art rooms and some closet space between the art rooms. That is the sum total of the request this year. The lease, let me, let me.
Ms. Johnson, just down back and forth.
What I also said last week was that there will be a lease coming before this board in September for a vote. It will include the request for that new space at this point in time. Let me finish.
So I'd like to add a few comments, please. So I would just like to acknowledge that behind the scenes, while this kind of back-and-forth is going, the parents of Carver and Seek are working together with us to find common issues to focus on improvement in terms of the building space, in terms of other issues reflecting the community. And I just want to say that the district is very, very supportive of that, although not directly in that conversation. And while one might listen to some of the back-and-forth and say there's a lot of discord and disagreement, there is a great deal more harmony, I think, than perhaps the record might reflect. I want to be very, very clear that when I said that students are not being displaced, I want to be very clear what I meant by that, right? Yes, I'm going to speak now, Ms. Johnson. What I'm trying to do is respond to your point.
No back and forth with the superintendent, please.
So as was, as Ms. Wilson said, okay, I'm not gonna do this. If you'd like to know the truth, I'm happy to tell you. If you don't, I'll be glad.
Thank you, thank you. Board member, Bledsoe.
Bledsoe and then Carver. Can we have a vote, please?
Excuse me, Ms. Cole, Ms. Cole, Ms. Cole, please, please.
Don't leave.
Please, please. Just, please. Listen, 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 Ms. Johnson, please, please, please. Excuse me, excuse me, please. Can you please just respect me? Please, just respect me, please. Respect me as the Chair. I don't want to kick nobody out, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just briefly would like to talk about resetting a precedent here. We have to respect as a board a process that we've created. So I think it's not becoming very inappropriate to entertain a motion on the floor to add an initial speaker. We have a process where people sign up to speak through board relations, and we need to respect that process, because once we continue to do this, then our board rules just go out the window. So I just say we need to respect the processes we put in place, and board members and the community need to understand that.
Can I just respond to that comment?
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, hold on, Ms. Carter.
So, thank you.
This has been done, this has been done a couple of weeks.
Ms. Johnson, please, Ms. Carter.
In terms of the comment about Seek and a displacement, while children were not displaced out of the building...
So I would ask that the district be honest when we talk about displacement. It's not about displacing them out of the building. We took them out of their classrooms for a tenant and just because they had a lease previously does not mean that they are now entitled to a lease or entitled to any space. This is our building first and foremost and we must take care of our students' needs first. That is our responsibility as the traditional North Public School Board.
So I do not want to engage in the back and forth, but I was interrupted in my effort to actually validate your point. When I said no students were displaced, I meant that no students were moved out of Bruce because of this. That is the point I was making. As we have been extremely public and explicit about, there were two classrooms involved, not at Carver, but at, but at Bruce. So what I was trying to say when I was interrupted is that when I said, answered about displaced, that's what, that's what I meant. I just couldn't get that point out. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
So I just wanted to make one, one final statement and I'm just going to leave it all alone. So I just wanted to be clear that when I ran in this race, I ran for not charter school kids, I ran for all of the kids in the city of Newark, whether it was traditional, public, charter, traditional, public or charter, because I am a product of traditional public school systems, system. Yes, I put my kids in a charter school because that was my choice as a parent. So when I make decisions sitting on this board, as a board member, I make the decisions what I feel is though is right for the greater good of the kids in the city of Newark, not because they are charter schools or because they are public traditional schools, but because they are kids in the city of Newark. I'm not going to resign because I'm here for the kids as I say.
Thank you, Ms. Cole, thank you, Ms. Cole. Ms. Cole. Ms. Cole. Security.
Security, what? Please, thank you. Security, what? You better call the police department. You're even asking to leave.
Ms., Ms. Cole.
Put that hand.
Ms. Cole.
Who are you talking about?
Ms. Wilson, you haven't been.
Ms., 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 uh.
Because you guys are raving about the kids. It has, it has never been.
Ms.
It has never been traditional.
Excuse me.
It has never been that. It has always been about being fair. Always been about following policy. It has always been.
15-minute recess, can I get a motion? Motion on the floor.
That has not happened.
Second, second, second.
That has not happened. Until you start expecting our state, we will be twice. But that has not happened.
Can the board finish their business, please? Thank you. Can Ms., can you remove Ms. Johnson, please?
Being too much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You got access.
See you next month.
He can't touch it. You better have a law.
Down one. Okay.
Be truthful.
So we're moving on.
Let's be truthful.
We're going to move on. I want to thank Ms. Gregory for your, for your comments that you placed here tonight. I want you to know that I do want to entertain that we have forensic audit in this district. Before we get low control, I would like to know what's really going on in this district. I know before Ms. Anderson came into this district, we had a surplus and I know somehow that surplus disappeared. So I do want to know what's going on with the money. So I want to ask for forensic audit and I'm going to ask our partners in education, the Ed Law Center, also Rutgers and Macalest State to join us as we ask forensic audit of this district as a whole.
I'm not sure people understand what a forensic audit is. There is, there, there is a public audit that is out there, there is a budget that is out there, there is a host of, of documents. We spend about six to seven hours a month in public conversations. Every single month we hear about, why didn't you give us more details about summer school? Why didn't you give more? That's because the way this board is structured, we have very long meetings about, in committees in which we provide detail, we put it in public. When you're dealing with six or seven hours and you're dealing with an enterprise of this magnitude, you literally cannot cover every single detail and you don't want us to or we'd never get home, right? So I will tell you, no, Ms., no, Ms. Gregory, I know, we, no, Ms. Gregory, it is not your time right now. Yeah. Okay. No, you have absolutely no idea what it is.
So, Mr. Superintendent.
Ms. Carter.
If I can say that as board members, I think we are aware as to what a forensic audit is. And while this may not be the forum for us to present every aspect of the forensic audit, what we're saying is as board members, we would like the forensic audit. There are several committees in which we can digest it in. It is something that we can have, so that is something that I support Ms. Deborah Smith Gregory in asking for that and the board chair, that we as board members understand and we have meetings outside of this public meeting where we can digest the information and process it.
Tell me what, what do you mean by a forensic audit? What do you mean by a forensic audit?
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we're not going to entertain this conversation right now. We're going to move on. We're going to move on. All right. Next is, excuse me.
You have no idea.
There are several things that we can get into, what RFPs are out, what's happening with the building, the selling of the buildings, what's happening educationally with contracts. There's a lot of things that we can speak about.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more. That's not a forensic audit.
No, it goes deeper than that. There are several things. I don't think that you should be.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Thank you. So also with the student.
Local control, I love it.
Also, I want to, I want to second what Mr. Bledsoe said. As the board president of this board, my obligation and responsibility is to advocate and promote traditional public schools. That's the board I sit on. That's the board that re-elected me three times to serve them. Those are the children who I serve each and every day. So I won't apologize for advocating for the children that I serve. I won't apologize, I won't allow nobody to go on social media or go in this community and try to bully any of my board members. If you got a problem with one of my board members, you got a problem with me, right? So I appreciate that, that there cease. I appreciate that cease and assist at this moment because it won't happen under my, I don't care who you are, I don't care how much taxes you pay. These are my board members and I'm going to defend them to hell freezes over. And I won't apologize for it, right? So, next, next, we're going to have our, we're going to do our voting items. Any questions on voting items?
Yes, Mr. Lewis. I have one question and one statement, if possible.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a question about 12.27, which is the amendment time and attendance software license support services. So I'm very clear on the fact that it's an amendment to increase basically for the licenses and the maintenance support. But before we vote on that, I just wanted to address the, well, ask if the software is actually being properly used because I know we had issues with people not scanning in and out or them not being able to generate reports a few months ago. So before we actually do this, I just want to make sure that we're not having any issues with it and it's being properly used. That's for Kronos.
Our Kronos system, Ms. Fonseca, is currently being used by the entire district. We recently, as recent as the last month and a half, converted from a pilot phase to a production phase for the processing of overtime. There are some individuals who are exempt based on either their title, their category, from Kronosing in and out. But typically, it is used for, Kronos is currently being used for the processing of time, the increase, decrease of personal time off, and feeds our PeopleSoft system, which is our software system that actually processes payroll to live direct deposits or checks.
So, thank you, Ms. Vow. I know what it's used for and I know the intent of it.
I'm trying to understand.
My question was, is it being properly used? Because there was issues with overtime payments a few months ago and we were made aware that certain employees should have been punching in and out and that, you know, that whole mess that happened. I just want to ensure that before we make any amendments to either, you know, to update the software licenses for the maintenance of it, we are properly using it. That's, that's what I want to make sure because it's a $300,000 increase and if it's not working for our district or if people don't know how to use it, then we need to make sure that everything is legit before we add another $300,000 to this. That's, that's all I want to make sure.
We did have some issues with overtime, is Ms. Okay, I was looking for you. Ms. Shombo, who controls payroll, can answer the questions more clearly than I can.
Hello again. So the question about the, are we using it properly? So we are doing a training for all timekeepers, for example, at all school sites and central office locations in about a week and a half for the actual maintenance of who's inputting time. And we are also training our administrators on approving time in September at their PLI. This is not new information, it's just frankly refreshing information. We've also trained on the portions of the system that have now released on overtime to make that into the system, including many of Ms. Wilson's departments. They have been trained on how to review the time processing for overtime. So it's sort of an ongoing training. It's not, you don't train once and think that everyone will effectively use the system. But the other piece that we are going to be doing this year is launching attendance reports, using the data from the Kronos system to share it back with schools so that they see the outcome of the data, so that frankly, they are also aware of what we see when we look at the data. So it's used for payroll, but it's also going to be used for reporting back to them on the attendance trends at their school. I think there's ongoing training that's needed all the time, but that's what our focus is on right now, is both timekeepers and administrators.
Okay.
Larissa, I'm sorry. Larissa, can you speak some to the difficulties the district's had with converting overtime? Because I think that's what Ms. Fonseca has been with.
Sure. Why we initiated building overtime into Kronos to begin with was because up until this past year, overtime was a paper-based process, which is a very outdated process for how you could capture overtime, given that in the Kronos system, everybody must scan in and scan out with their fingerprint as a biometric screening system. So we have actually the time in the system that they work for overtime, but we weren't able to translate that to overtime in pay. And so Ms. Wilson's, many of Ms. Wilson's departments were really the test case for understanding how we can build the rules into the Kronos system so that overtime is captured automatically, approved by the manager, and paid through payroll. We've run several payroll cycles probably for the past two and a half, three months for these departments that we've been testing the piloting of overtime in and they've been receiving paychecks through that. So that is a vast improvement over a full paper-based process. We still have other departments to add based on the lessons we've learned from that, but we're close to full implementation.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I just have a statement, Mr. Lewis. There's an agenda item, well, there's an item to vote on, is 12.50, which is the amendment to contract printer and toner cartridges. So I don't want to speak directly to that, but I want to make a general statement. I've been in several discussions on the finance committee and also with Ms. Vow and a few of her team members, including Mr. Ballard and a few other folks. And I just want to ask that the board be a little bit more diligent and become aware when we're voting on items pertaining to any type of recycling materials. While this contract itself doesn't speak to the disposal or specifically how this is being processed, I just think that there's ways that we can go about this that will be a savings to the district. And I don't want to say that it's a discussion that's on the back burner, although it hasn't moved as aggressively as I like it to. I do want to say that it's a discussion that's happening. We actually had a meeting about it this afternoon, but the reason why I'm making a statement about it publicly is because the last time this was brought up to be looked into thoroughly, there was a lot of conversations that had nothing to do with the point. And the point is that we can do this in a more cost-effective manner and also generate revenue for the district. So when we talk about what's happening with the finances of our district, we need to be aware of these things. So I'm just using that as an example so that when it comes up again on something like this, that we are well-versed before we vote on anything. And while I don't have an issue with this particular item because we did discuss everything in finance, I'm just asking that we're aware moving forward.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Chair Lewis, I have an item that I want to call to the attention of the board. Unfortunately, I can't find it. It is under the purchasing reference and this item I want to call to the board's attention because it is the purchase of web connectivity software for student to science. It should be on here for approximately 750K. That particular item is the first item that we will be spending out of the additional state aid that we've received and it's specifically, the superintendent spoke to it this afternoon with regards to student to science and its ability to provide virtual capacity for the district through all of its devices. I just can't find it right now. I think it's 1233. So I wanted to bring that to the board's attention because we did indicate any monies being spent will be brought to your attention in terms of that particular pot of aid.
That's construction number two.
Yeah, I think it is. Right. I think it is. So that will be used to put in place the software and connectivity for the student to science installation in the central office and will be used directly by students for academic purposes only.
Ms. Wilson.
Yeah.
The contract's a one-year.
You know what? I'll talk to you about this offline.
Okay. And there's one other financial item. You are not voting on it this month, but it will probably come up next month. We have had discussion on sale of the supplemental fringe benefits fund building located at 30 Clinton Street. We have been able to reach settlement with NTU during the contract negotiation process and have moved forward with the sale of that building. We actually do have someone who has bid approximately 1.8 million on that building and proceeds from that once shared in a 3565 split with NTU and clearing of expenses, you will receive something indicating that the district has received this revenue and you will have approved, you will be able to approve the actual sale once we've worked out the details. So I wanted the board to be aware of that.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, Mr., Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Lewis, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Ms. Wilson, 12.4.
Uh huh.
Was this, if my memory is correct, this is the, this was on our agenda last year as well. Is this the second improvement, you know, cap that we gave to this?
This is not, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead. This is not the cap, it is actually an audit report. Marie, I see you sitting back there. Can we open, Rob, can you open 12.4, please? I think it's a current audit report, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. For the 1516 school year, this audit was completed actually on May 30th, 2017. So it is a current audit of their 1516 school year expenses. and proceeds from that once shared in a 3565 split with NTU, and clearing of expenses, you will receive something indicating that the district has received this revenue. And you will have appro, you will be able to approve the actual sale, once we've worked out the details. So, I wanted the board to be aware of that.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes, Mr. Owen, Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Lewis, I apologize. I'm sorry.
Ms. Wilson, 12.4.
Uh huh.
Was this, if my memory is correct, this is the, this was on our agenda last year as well. Is this the second improvement, you know, cap that we gave to this?
This is not, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead. This is not the cap. It is actually an audit report. Marie, I see you sitting back there. Can we open, Rob, can you open 12.4, please? I think it's a current audit report, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Oh, it is. For the 1516 school year, this audit was completed actually on May 30th, 2017. So, it is a current audit of their 1516 school year expenses. There's that, they're looking for us to recruit $1,700 from Clinton Hill Community and Early Childhood Center, and next month, we will present the corrective action. Correct, Marie? So, that's some total of the findings of this particular audit. So, it is, it is a different audit than you saw last year, and also for a different school year.
A different school year?
Mm-hmm.
I just know, I see this school every year.
They are one of our providers, and they are audited annually.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Owens.
Item 12.39, 8821 Recruitment and Staffing Services Contract Award. So, I'd just like to make some comments towards that resolution, and there may possibly be some questions, so if, I don't know if Ms. Shombo maybe want to be ready to respond. So, good evening, everyone. First time speaking this evening. So, I want to preface my comments with recognizing that I'm speaking from a combination of roles, both my professional role as a teacher educator, and also for my, for my board role. So, most people know that I have a commitment, a passion for education, but specifically, my passion is for teacher development, and that is what this resolution has something to do with this evening, about recruitment of teachers and possibly other staff into our district. So, I'm very clear on the ideas that I have about education, and what teachers should, how teachers should be prepared, and how they should act accordingly, once they're hired into this district. And I just have like a really big imagination around that, and I think that, you know, this is a space in this Democratic forum to talk about that, so I look forward to other board members making some comments, because I am going to advocate and ask that the board members vote no to this resolution. So, the reality is that we do have a shortage of teachers. That's nothing unknown in public education, though I would challenge the superintendent's remarks that 100% should be seen as something that's unattainable, 100% staff. We should always be striving towards that, and I do believe that we can get to that point. So, it shouldn't be seen as a norm to be less than that, because we can go into other school districts, and that's certainly not the case, and it shouldn't be the case here in Newark Public Schools. The other, another reality is that the teaching profession has been beat up, right? There's this narrative that teachers don't matter, that you don't need a lot of training, that you don't have to care, that you can go through some, some very easy training, very quick, short-term training, and you can move mountains. And it's not to say that there aren't educators that do end up doing that, but that also shouldn't be a norm. We should be looking for teachers to go through an extensive preparation program, be student teachers, learn about the community, particularly when it comes to urban communities, and really be embedded in them in order to understand what are the challenges that districts like Newark face. So, again, this is why this is very serious and dear to me. So, now shifting to strategic plan, and it's going to take a couple of minutes, but I haven't spoken all night, so I'm going to take my time. Priority two is to ensure great talent in every school and department, and there are four strategies underneath that priority. Recruit and select the best educators for MPS. Continue to retain our most effective teachers and principals. Provide accessible and practical feedback and coaching, and raise the bar for excellence for all staff in MPS. There are a lot of people, many of whom in this room right now, and us sitting here on the stage, that put a lot of time, energy, commitment, and passion into talking about these ideas, and what we wanted to see over the next three years for this district. And I'm very disheartened that there's been so little talk over this last school year about the strategic plan, so little reference to it. We talked about how there was going to be a mid-year update, and we never received that. In our committees, we have pushed to make sure that we're aligning an agenda, at least in most of them, I was on three out of the five last year, that are connected to the strategic plan. But there has been a vast, a deep lack of accountability to what the strategic plan actually says, and then for us to report out and figure out how, where we are on that path. So, and in particular, as a former member of personnel for last school year, we certainly talked a lot about some of these things in underneath priority two, but there was never really a systematic report out on where we were, based on what it says we're supposed to be. And it's not to say that this needs to be in stone, right? If you don't have a copy, it's available on the website. However, if we are going to change paths, we need to have that conversation as well, and that, and that did not happen. So, my concern around this resolution in particular, there are four vendors that are being, that we're going to approve or not approve to help in the recruitment of teachers in this district, and one of which is Teach for America, which many people, if not all, know that that's how I actually came into this district 13 years ago. But again, in terms of my vast, my, you know, my passion and my imagination, I do think a contract with Teach for America needs to be phased out. We need to start thinking about how we can grow our own, which is a part of the strategic plan. Where are the conversations around that? The new teacher project, there is a proposal to have a one-year contract with this organization, this company, so that they can create a campaign around recruiting teachers to come into Newark. And that is something that is mentioned in strategic plan. However, when I was a part of this committee, as many committees I've been a part of, the Discipline Committee, Program Instruction, X, Y, and Z, I did not envision outsourcing this work. We need to build the capacity of this district, and if that means reprioritizing where some of the funding is going, then that's what we need to do, because I'm confident, even though I don't know all the ins and outs, that we spend money in places that I don't think that we need to, and it's not actually beneficial to the students, and this is something that would be beneficial to the students. With the other two companies, they basically get a percentage or a fee, like Teach for America also gets a fee based on every teacher that is sent here, and, and, but these other two companies, from my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they will not get a fee unless they actually find teachers. I don't think that we should allow these vendors also to be approved, because I don't want this to be a crutch moving forward the next three years, because that's how long this contract is, and then they can, we can reapprove it for another year, two times in a row. But we shouldn't allow this to be a crutch that's there. I don't want to be here next year, talking about this, and we're saying, well, we don't need to really put emphasis into developing our university partnerships, because we have these two companies that we can fall back on. No, let us put the time, if that means forcing us to put the time and energy into developing the partnerships, into creating a grow-your-own model, then that's what we need to do. And just a quick, like, idea, there, there's something called the Future Teachers Association or Educators Association. I don't know how many clubs we have in the schools around this district, but it's very few. Why aren't we promoting something like that? And I know a lot of teachers, personally, my friends and former colleagues in Newark Public Schools, when I was a teacher, would love to lead an initiative like that, to make sure that we are filling these pipelines, to get teachers that are actually from Newark and the surrounding area. So, in conclusion, it's no secret, right, that this board has been at odds with these, the last two superintendents, and in fact, that Newark Public Schools has been occupied all this time. We have not been able to actually set the vision for what we want to happen in Newark Public Schools, and we are in this transitional phase. The board chair, Mr. Superintendent, signed the Personnel Transition Plan, and that's wonderful. But we need to make sure that we are in this transitional phase, talking about what we want to see in this district. This is the time to do it. It's not, we don't need to wait for anybody to leave, because let's be real, there are going to be people that are going to continue to exit, because that has been happening over the last six months, that people are leaving, they're finding new places, because they see the writing on the wall. And that's okay, but we need to make sure that we are setting the tone, and we're setting the vision for what we want to see, because if it's not now, then I don't know when. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, Ms. Carter?
So, I agree with many of the points Ms. Owens made. What I will say, and I spoke with the Chief Talent Officer, is that I understand the need, as we've had extensive conversations. While I do think that we need to improve and invest in our district, I think that it is also important for us to get this campaign started. And right now, I would say that I would recommend that we vote for this for one year, versus the three-year contract that's up here with the two-year, with the option to renew for two years, and then one additional year. So, I would like the contract period to be for one year only, and to take away all of the other options. And I say that because I think it's important, seeing the, what we go through with trying to get teachers. We already have some Teach for America teachers here that we still have to pay their fee for, and we have a hard time staffing, and I think to not have this right now, we need to be in preparation right now, looking for these hard-to-staff areas that we still haven't filled, as well as those coming in the upcoming year. So, it would be my recommendation that the board vote for this contract for a one-year period, and that in doing so, we still stay on the district to build the district's capacity, but to make sure that we have this in place for this year.
So, just point of clarification, so there's actually four contracts that are part of this resolution, so, and there's only the new teacher project that wrote, you know, that it's just a one-year thing, and it would be at a cost of $187,000 to the district for them to create a campaign, for them to video teachers, for them to create a website, which we have a website, Teach Newark, that's fairly new, and also was revamped so that principals actually can access and be made aware that teachers have applied as soon as it's in there, and that's something that hasn't happened in the past. So, I just point all that out to say that there have been changes made in the last year that really should assist us as a district in being able to recruit teachers on our own. And I really just, also, I'm sorry, the question I meant to ask at the end is, have we had these vendors, looking at all four, I know we've had Teach for America, have they worked with the district in the past, and to what effect did they improve our staffing rate, if at all? Because if they're new, and we got to 98% without them, why do we need them? So, that question, and then just a point of clarification, Board Member Carter, about which contract, or are you saying all four of them? Just, I'm just not clear on what you're saying, but I allow it to happen for one year. And just sorry, keeping in mind that the Teach for America teachers that would come in this year would also have to be, the fee would have to be paid for them next year as a second-year teacher as well. So, we just need to be clear on what we're recommending.
So, Rob, can you turn my microphone on? Thank you. So, to respond to the questions, I think what we can clarify is, these are all one-year contracts that do not need to be renewed after that. And so, if that is in any area of concern, I believe the responses that the vendors replied was what it would cost each year for five years. We can sign a one-year contract with them, and you can make that decision not to renew that contract next year, or not even put that forward for a vote. I don't foresee any problems with that. Ms. Wilson, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, I'm not the purchasing expert, but I think that's what, what we set as the term of the contract, and we sign after you vote to approve it, not when they submit an RFP response. So, that's my first piece, is just on the actual term of the contract, being limited to one year, I think we can all agree to that. There is a, a point of clarification on TFA. We are hiring eight TFA teachers out of our 250 new teachers. If they are hired this year, they are hired for two years, and we would therefore pay TFA both years for those eight individuals. So, if you are going to approve that contract for them to start teaching this fall, we would then either have to fire them next year, and have them not teach, or we would renew that contract for those eight individuals for next year. So, I think that's the point of clarification on the term. On the larger picture, for me, I know we may agree to disagree on this, Ms. Owens, that I believe all of the things you said are accurate. We should explore every avenue for recruitment. For me, there is not a choice between doing this, and having external support, and building our partnerships with universities, figuring out how to grow our substitute teachers, our paraprofessionals, our community members into teachers themselves. I don't see this as a choice. I think that they're saying we have individuals on our staff who work on the university partnerships, for example. But to develop a campaign where we have teachers in videos, and the mayor in a video, to sort of put out a professional image to say, this is what it looks like to teach in Newark, and you should come be part of this family, that goes beyond the capacity I have in the Talent Office, or our Communications Office has for putting together very polished videos. I think that is a well-worthy investment of our time and money to do that with somebody else who is actually frankly, more of an expert in that. Therefore, I see it as doing all the things that you're saying, and more. I think there are going to be things that we're never going to knock it out of the park on in one year. I am incredibly proud that we have 47 teacher vacancies at this point, but it is through a very, very complicated slog to get there, and we're not done. I agree with you. I want zero vacancies. Shutting off our avenues for exploring different options, I think makes it more difficult for us to get to zero vacancies.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. I just, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question regarding to this.
One second, one second. One thing, Larissa, you talked about, from what I gather, talk about promotion, right? And one thing about, you know, public schools, we have Arts High School, we got Eastside High School with a television department, we got Malcolm X Shabazz, and some of these students work for major companies when they graduate, like BET, VH1, MTV, Fox 5. So, why, if we're talking about promoting our district, why not use our talents that we have here? Allow our students, hold on, hold on. Allow our students who are going to be affected by the teacher that we hire, allow them to promote their district that's helping to educate them. Why we're not looking in that direction? Because I think, you know, if they're good enough for Fox 5, they're good enough for BET, VH1, MTV, and they're able to these Nike commercials and all types of commercials, they're good enough to promote their district. Why not go that avenue?
So, I don't want to disparage any of our existing talent. I absolutely see that talent and acknowledge it. The work that we're, we would be paying for goes beyond doing the video, it's actually doing analytics to understand where are our recruitment pipelines currently working? How many teachers do we hire that stay in the district, that stay in the district at high-level ratings? Then speaking with stakeholders to understand, why does a teacher come to Newark Public Schools, so we can get our messaging right, and be able to do better marketing and branding, and be able to compete frankly, with those in other education sectors who are better at marketing and branding? And so, it goes beyond just doing the specific videos, it's really about helping us frankly, with gathering input from members such as board members, stakeholders, community members, to understand what's the message that we're missing, if we're not getting all of the right people that we need, because we are filling vacancies, but I have an eye to ensuring that we fill even more vacancies with those who are committed to stay in the community, and not just come to work here for a couple of years. I think just understanding what those messages are, we need thought partners, we want to engage with others, and we have a capacity of a team of four people in central office who work on recruitment and staffing. We want to expand that this year. We're hiring two recruitment coordinators. But for me to ask that a staff of six put aside all the other recruitment and staffing efforts they have, in order to do specifically this, which is a key element in our strategic plan, the Teach in Newark campaign, means that we're going to have to put something else on hold in order to accomplish this objective ourselves.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Chairman.
Vice Chair.
Okay, I have a question, well, actually, I have a statement and a question. While I do agree with my fellow board member Leah, who I think does phenomenal work, I mean, Leah is really brilliant in what she does, she is extremely passionate in what she does, and if there's one thing about Leah, Leah is always very factual about what she puts out. But in this case, when I hear Larissa saying that, okay, so we'll hire 250 teachers for a year, and then we have to fire them to rehire them, is there any guarantee, Larissa, that we would hire those exact 250 teachers?
So, we're talking about the eight TFA teachers that we would have to fire, if we don't want to continue to pay for them, so it wouldn't be the full group, but we have 250 new teachers, which by the way, tomorrow morning, we will be welcoming to the district, which is one of my favorite new days, to welcome all of our new teachers, and get them to stay for many, many years. We would have to fire eight of those teachers for TFA if we don't have the...
How many? How many? Eight? Okay.
So...
But I would also add, for TFA, those are math and science and bilingual. We don't hire TFA teachers for our non-hard-to-staff subjects, because we feel we can fill those spots with other educators, as we have, we have elementary...
So, to be very clear here, this is a one-year contract, and then option for two? What is we doing here? What are we talking here?
This year.
So, it's two-year, two-year contract? Okay. Okay. Only two years? We're not talking to extend to five, six, seven years, no? Only two years?
The contract for TFA can be signed for those that are being hired this year, that would then retain for next year.
Okay.
All the others can be for one year.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Ms. Gaddy.
And I just want to add, because I did receive an email from Leah early on today, and we didn't have the opportunity to have this discussion, and it's very unfortunate, because in speaking with Larissa, and I went to the Chair of the Personnel Committee, Darcey, to have some discussion, and now hearing why Leah is really concerned, now I'm really concerned that we should have the opportunity to do more with individuals in our district, and to be able to... and to be able to tell our story. And so I just think that this is quite unfortunate, because I appreciate the information, Larissa, and I did go through the strategic plan with you to go over the points, but hearing it, you know, from Leah, and she arrived late, so I didn't get the opportunity to ask her to express her concerns, now I'm just not, I'm just not feeling that I can support it either. And I just, just wanted to say that for the record.
Mr. Chair, there was a question I had that wasn't answered. So the, again, as I said, we know that Teach for America has had a relationship with the district, but these other three organizations, so has the district had a relationship with them? And if so, what effect did they have on us getting to 98% staffed, or not?
PCG, which is the abbreviated version for one of the vendors in there, we explored a preliminary relationship with this in the spring, and said, see if you can find us a few math teachers. We hired one math teacher for one of our K8s. So that's the first foray we've had with them, and we're sort of going to see if we see more math teachers come from them, since we had one hire that the principal at Sussex Avenue was really happy with. We have not had any relationship with SelectEd before, frankly, they weren't even on our radar. They responded to the RFP, and we took a look and thought that they might be a potential person. Again, per your comment, they won't receive any money if they don't find us teachers that we like, so that's why we were willing to sort of explore a relationship with them. Obviously, TFA, we have had a relationship with. We hadn't, we did not have one, I think, for about a year or two, and returned to one last year. And for TNTP, they have not specifically helped us on staffing and recruitment work in the past, they did provide input on our evaluation system.
Mr. Chair.
So my only question is, I talked to Larissa earlier, and I heard Leah's opinions and views about this, and to be honest, I was going to go with Larissa and go in with the outside resources, but once again, like what Kim says, sitting here, you know, hearing Leah's points and concerns, but now my only concern is, if we do this within the district, it's 47 teachers, 47 teacher vacancies that are currently open now, right, Larissa?
Correct, for September 5th.
So I'm just, my concern is, if we do do this in-house, like, how long is it going to actually take us? Because we're trying to fill these positions before the school year starts, correct?
Well, no, it's actually for the larger recruitment campaign. In the strategic plan, the initiative was, in 2017-18, we will launch a new recruitment campaign. To do that, recruitment launches in December or January. And so for us to have a new recruitment campaign, a website, set of videos, new branding, new marketing, that all has to be completed by December in order for us to be competitive with charters who hire earlier than us and other districts. To do that, we need to also go to job fairs with all that information. So this is for recruitment for 17-18, the TNTP piece. We can use SelectEd and PCG if we wanted to hire teachers after you approve the resolution for this year, so that might fill some of the 47. But we're really looking forward of getting ahead of the recruitment season and starting far earlier before, so we would want the work completed by December so we could launch it in January.
I'd just like to add one comment, and that is that we, we, the management team, if you will, strongly recommend that you vote for this, for the following reasons. It's more, and that is, while we absolutely are committed to implementing the strategic plan, what you have heard is our ability to faithfully implement that plan at the moment is limited by our capacity, both in numbers and in skill. While I completely endorse Ms. Owens' suggestion that we organize towards doing this internally over time, I will tell you flat out, that is not going to happen if we do it on our own. On the timeframe, that is absolutely urgent to make sure that, excuse me, that makes sure that this is staffed. This is, these are, with regard to, we are happy to modify the motion to make clear, if it isn't already, that it be for one year. There's been some confusion in the back and forth about this. The only exception to that is not a long-term contract with Teach for America, but with regard to eight teachers, who I just learned are math and science and bilingual teachers, who will not come here and take spots they were probably already in the district working at, if they know that they're going to be fired in 12 months. And so that's, so you have my personal, strong recommendation that we do this now while honoring Ms. Owens' very, I think, compelling case, that over time, over the next year, this migrate into a development of internal capacity.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification.
Yes, Ms. Gaddy. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So then, it would be the one year, but for Teach for America, we would not have to go to two-year. We would have to have...
Only for the eight.
So it would be a two-year, only for the eight employees that we hire for Teach for America, but then all of the contracts concurrently will only be for one year.
Correct, while we build capacity. Yes.
With no...
Okay, thank you for that. That's better.
Yeah, thank you.
So point of clarification, so my question is, what, where does it say these Teach for America teachers have to be fired? Because I didn't, again, came here through Teach for America, served my two-year commitment, and then beyond. So there, when I came to Newark, I signed a contract with Newark Public Schools. I did not work for Teach for America. I worked for Newark Public Schools. And so as a result of coming through that program, I received professional development, I received $3,500, $3,700, something like that, per year, and AmeriCorps funding that I could use towards further education, or to apply to pass loans. So I don't understand why we're saying that we would have to fire these teachers. We're just not paying the fee, and quite frankly, even though I don't necessarily want to take away the opportunity that I had, and I know that's important for a lot of these Teach for America candidates, because they are people of color, they do, some of them actually do come from Newark and the surrounding area as well, so it's not always this idea of an outsider. But if they really want to teach, there's nothing, from my understanding, that would preclude them from continuing to teach as a teacher in Newark Public Schools. So if I could get clarification about why we would have to quote-unquote "fire" these teachers?
So our contract that we enter in with TFA is that we pay them $4,000 per teacher per year. So if it's for two years, if we are not going to pay TFA for the following year, then we would be in violation of our contract with them. So I'm happy for lawyers, frankly, I like to play one, but I am not one, for lawyers to chime in as to what the recourse would be if we violate the contract knowingly, and actually in advance notifying people we will violate the contract. The other piece for me is that if they would like to leave TFA, not take the $3,700 that they would get from AmeriCorps, not take the professional development and say, I'm going to break my own contract with TFA, that may be another recourse, but frankly, that would, for me, not be what I would assume our educators would choose for themselves. So I'm, I'm happy for us to have further legal counsel, but if we're entering into a contract where we say we pay $4,000 each year for the two-year commitment that an AmeriCorps member signs, that they would be here for two years, and we would pay TFA that $4,000 per year.
Are we really talking about compromising the employment of eight individuals who are committed to work in the Newark Public Schools and the hard-to-staff subjects? We're not talking about a massive ideological or structural issue? We're talking about eight human beings who have committed to work here, and frankly, whether they would be fired, or simply choose not to continue their employment here, because they will be scooped up in adjoining districts? I just can't, I'm having trouble understanding why we're committing an hour of our time to talking about the possibility of not bringing these good people on board to teach here. I guess I...
So, well, also, it's just a process, too. I mean, it's turned into eight individuals, because those would be the eight individuals that would be hired by Teach for America. But I think fundamentally, the question here is about the process and the longevity of the contract.
Right.
I mean, so, and I understand, and, I mean, I'm clear now, and I'm ready to vote, but I needed that conversation, unfortunately, so that I can be edified in that process.
And one thing I would add is, our principals are the ones who are requesting the TFA students. It's not something that we're forcing on principals. We frankly have more principal requests than we have TFA candidates. I understand that there is 1,700 different ways we can approach recruitment, and Ms. Owens, I actually would love to sort of sit down with you again, talk more about pathways that we can engage in. For me, this is a crucial aspect, to be able to hold me accountable for getting our vacancies filled. That's my number-one priority. You can ask Sarah and I, Sarah at our vacancy tracker, every day, making sure that we, when we open schools, that teachers are, who are qualified and committed to this community are standing in front of our kids. That is our number-one priority, to the detriment of some of the other work that we do. This piece, for me, that was put in our budget specifically for recruitment, is potentially $200, $250,000, is one slice of a pie that is very large that we have focused on recruitment.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Carter?
I just have two things. So I want us to be mindful that we talk about competition, let's be realistic, that we're in competition with the charter schools and other districts. And I think that we need to be mindful of how we brand ourselves. A lot of times, we talk about not exposing the great things that we're doing as a district, the great work our teachers are doing, and I believe that this program would be a way to advertise what we're doing, to make sure we get the best of the best. Because at the end of the day, those are the people who are in front of our students, and we need great educators. I totally agree that there are other avenues, there are people in our district who may be able to do it, but let's be mindful, we're trying to do more with less right now, and so I don't believe that we have the capacity to do it in the timeframe that we have. Be mindful, we're still fighting this expansion of charter schools, and we have many teachers going that route. We have other districts paying teachers more at certain points, so we need to take all of that into consideration and go along with this strategic plan. I think that the recommendation of the one-year without renewal, and the two-year for Teach for America, is something that we should go for, move forward, and definitely explore the options inside the district to continue the campaign, but to move forward now so that we can guarantee that it'll be done by December, so that we can go out and start offering these contracts. As we did this year, we offer contracts early, whereas we haven't been able to do that in the past. And so that has affected our numbers this year, as to why we have, last time I checked, it was 47 vacancies versus where we were last year. So we're making steps, and I don't want us to go backwards, because then we'll be hollering at the beginning of next school year, why don't we have the teachers? Because we waited for this teacher who is already overloaded to come and shoot this video. So if we want to talk about being in competition, we have to do what our competitors are doing, and they have a great marketing team, and they have a strategy into how they market Kip and Uncommon Schools, and so we need to get with the program, but definitely explore other options and start doing that this year. So I would ask that we go forward, and we vote, with that amendment being that we vote for one year, no extension, and two years for the Teach for America, no extensions.
Mr. Chair, last comment.
Can we get a motion?
One, just real quick, please, thank you. I just, this is the last thing, and absolutely, there are many different ways we can go about doing recruitment. I just want to, you know, basically, you know, just warrant my fellow board members not to fall into the trap of this narrative that, you know, we are, we don't have enough, we can't do it, it's not what is best for the students right now. If we say that this is the way that we want to move forward with this district, then it's our responsibility to make sure that it happens that way. And I'm just, I'm just very passionate about it, because we can do so many things, and we would open up our imaginations a lot more, and not be so concerned about what we don't have. The resources are there, the, we have people in the community partnerships, we're not talking about tapping a teacher that's already overloaded. There are a lot of ways that we can go about this, and then I'm just saying, if we use this as a crutch, it's going to continue to happen, where we say, well, we don't need to worry about trying to figure out how to make this happen. We need to do the hard work of figuring out how to make it happen, and we need to do it now.
But I think we're focusing on the video aspect of it, but there's more to it that was mentioned. There's the analyzing the data, and those streams, and we need to make sure that we have someone who is doing it, and doing it with quality. So yes, we may have someone in the community, but I don't believe that to get this done by December, we will have someone who will be able to do everything that was explained. We're focusing on the aesthetics of it, but there's so much more to this contract than just that piece.
Absolutely, there is, you're right.
All right, can I get a motion?
Motion, of course.
Motion.
Garcia, who's second? Okay, so I understand the motion, I think, yeah, right, so I think Ms. Carter's motion, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Carter, was to amend 12.39, so that TFA would have a two-year contract, no renewal, all other vendors a one-year contract, no renewal. Is that correct? Okay. So I got a motion by Ms. Garcia, second by whom?
No, motion by Carter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fonseca, Garcia.
Okay, all board members, we're going to vote on 12.39 with the amendment, this is going to be actually voting on this item, with the amendment that TFA would have a two-year contract, no extension, no renewal, and all other vendors, one-year contract, no renewal. Roll call. Bledsoe?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Gaddy?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Owens?
No.
Ms. Padilla?
No.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. He messed up, Mr. Padilla.
Yes, mine's a yes.
Ms. Padilla's a yes?
No.
One, two, three, four, five. All right, with Mr. Padilla voting yes, we have five yeses and four nos.
You guys got me confused.
Carrie's. Okay, all other, all other items under finance, operations, purchasing, any other, any other discussion?
Aren't you supposed to be voting electronically?
Yeah, all, board members, please vote electronically.
Oh, we got to vote electronically?
Yeah.
Is it not up there?
It's not up there?
It's not up there?
No, it's not up there.
Electronically.
Want to proceed?
Yeah, it's not there.
Okay, we're going to proceed?
All right, he going, he putting it in.
All right. Okay, any other discussion, any other items under 12, finance, operations, purchasing? Okay, can I get a motion to vote on those items as a package? Who was that? Y'all going too fast.
Fonseca.
Fonseca, Padilla.
Just ours, I got it together.
This motion to vote on all other items under finance, operations, purchasing, as a package, all in favor? Any poser abstain? We're going to take them as a package. Is there a motion to vote on these other items?
Motion.
Bledsoe?
Second.
Stefanso?
Yep.
This is a motion to vote on all other items under 12, finance, operations, and purchasing. Roll call. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Padilla?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
All items under 12, finance, operations, and purchasing, pass. Next, we have, we went through executive session, next we have legal items, there's the designation newspapers, 504 connotations, officer designation, affirmative action officer designation, legal services, and revised policies. Take them separate.
We'll do it all together.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Bledsoe, is there a second?
Second.
Fonseca. Motion to take all legal items together, all in favor?
Aye.
Any poser abstain? Take the legal items together. Can I get a motion to vote on these items?
Motion.
Bledsoe, second, Padilla. Motion to actually vote on the legal items. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Stefanso?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Padilla?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Carries. All legal items approved. Program instruction. Can I get a motion to vote on those?
Motion on floor.
Padilla, vote as block. Is there a second?
Second.
Bledsoe. This is a motion to vote on PNI items as a block, all in favor?
Aye.
Any poser abstain? Thank you. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to vote on the items?
Move.
Bledsoe, second.
Second.
Fonseca, a second. This is a motion to vote on all PNI items. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Padilla?
Yes.
Chair Lewis?
Yes.
Carries. All PNI items approved. Old, new business, Mr. Chair?
Any old, new business?
Mr. Chair.
Who was that?
Me.
Ms. Owens?
Just two quick points. In terms of the lease with Seek Academy and George Washington Carver, I'm going to make sure that the program instruction committee takes up the instructional aspect. So I definitely heard and took note from comments during public participation about the expansion of Brew Street School and pre-K and kindergarten, and also the comments board member Carter made as well. So we'll make sure to explore that in program instruction. And just another comment, I'm sorry, and sorry, if there's anything else that someone from the community wants to forward as questions or suggestions, please feel free to do so, lowins@mps.k12 nj.us. Other point, in terms of the public participation as well, I just want to caution my fellow board members that the conversation definitely got very heated. Honestly, it was quite, I was a little bit embarrassed about the way the back and forth was happening on all sides, from all aspects. But I think we need to caution shutting down, basically kind of free speech and violating that. So it's not to say that I agree with everything that everyone says that comes up to the podium. However, people do have a right to speak, and it has been the practice of this board to allow people to speak. We know that there are people that will come in late, and then we see them, and then somebody will make a motion to allow them to speak. And I don't think that we should, you know, allow favoritism to happen, just because we may not want to hear what somebody has to say. I don't think that that's fair. So I just wanted to say that. And I'm clear, also just wanted to make the comment even by saying that, that I'm clear that I'm serving traditional public schools, newer public schools. I am here to improve newer public schools. That is my focus. But again, even though charter schools are not under the purview of this board, the individuals that come and speak are of the public, and they are voters, and they do have a right to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Carter?
So two things. First, I want to say that I think that it has been a tradition or a practice of the board if someone has come in late. However, that was not the situation tonight. This person was not on the list at all, and they wanted to take the place of another person because that person did not show up. So there have been times where people who come to the mic week after week did not sign up, and if they did not sign up, we did not allow them to speak. So I think we need to be mindful of that. My original comment was for the community. Just a reminder, on August 26, there's a back-to-school backpack drive at the Family Support Center from 1 to 4. So if you can spread the word, make sure families are there to get backpacks. September 5 is the first day of school, and September 13, there's a Title I Planning Committee meeting at Arts High School from 5:30 to 7:30. So if you have not received our Newark Public School key dates from the Community Engagement Office, these should be outside. So I ask that you pick them up and that you also share with the community and make sure we get our young people some backpacks, and also that parents and community members come out and engage in a Title I Planning Committee meeting.
Yes, please text.
Ms. Gaddy?
I do want to make an announcement. Freehold Rufus saw me early in City Hall, and he wanted me to invite all of the board members to the John F. K., huh? Okay, John F. Kennedy High School, Tuesday, September 19. There was donations made, and people participated to acquire a Lyft bus for the students. And so it's 10 o'clock, again, at John F. Kennedy High School, 311 South 10th Street, Newark, New Jersey. You should have been, you should have received an email as well. But I wanted to make sure that I relayed that message for Freehold Johnson. Thank you.
All the board members?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn. Carter, second. Fonseca, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good night.